Guys, ready? Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete. Thank you. Public hearings, we have non-citizens comment on agenda-related items, limited to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sammy Lucas-Gavitz from Manistee Tourism. I'm speaking on behalf of the Short Term Rental Discussion. I'm here to be able to provide some data if you have some questions. But, you know, short-term rentals play an important role in tourism, but they do need to be regulated at a local level. We don't want this taken over by the state so we can keep the fabric of Manistee here. But, we've got some data. I'm happy to provide that data for you, but short-term rentals really should be treated like hotels in this respect, pay the right taxes, be inspected, be a part of everything that the hotels have to do, so there shouldn't be a distinction. But, it is an important part of tourism and a growth opportunity for us. So, I'm happy to answer any questions and provide you with any data that you might need.
Thank you.
Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue. I beg to differ what she just said. She ought to live in the neighborhood with, have a whole bunch of daily rentals. It's a lot of extra noise, parking problems. They take away from the way the neighborhood was before, and I think that they're wrong. If they want to do that, promote the hotels, the motels, the campgrounds, there's cottages that they have around outside of city. Leave the neighborhoods alone. It's a residential area, and I, it's, it's a business. They run it as a business, and she says, oh, they're paying taxes. Are they paying sales tax? They're making big money on this, and we're the ones that are paying for it, the people that live there year-round.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of a meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of Local Revenue Sharing Board grant application. The Local Revenue Sharing Board, LRSB, distributes 2% money from the Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2024 cycle to applications is Friday, September 6th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The City of Manistee Fire, Police and Fire Departments have prepared a joint grant application for submission to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for an unmanned aerial to assist with investigation, search and rescue. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to Local Revenue Sharing Board for the Police and Fire Departments in the amount of $14,719.35 for an unmanned aerial vehicle. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion?
Can we get some information for the public on what we're submitting for and what that might mean for us?
Yeah, so, the need for drone really came into focus three or four years ago. We had someone who called in, a loved one who was missing, and they were in the woods, and we really realized that what takes us, our police officers and firefighters, hours to cover through the thickness of woods, the beaches, could be five to 10 minutes with a drone. And so, that, that started the conversation, and so, we've garnered support for that. And with Manistee's elderly population, autistic population, it really gives us a tremendous resource when it comes to search and rescue. And you're talking about keeping your employees safe. So, instead of have firefighters and police officers climbing through trees or on the beach, we can fly a drone. Especially the last two years with some of the incidents we've had, sheens on the water, major events, they add a level of security for major events. So, it really has driven us to identify this need so we can really more effectively provide those services to the public that we serve. So, we used it three or four years ago for a firefighting application. We had to ask for a neighboring agency, and there was a field on fire that was elevated, and getting a drone up there for the on-scene commander of the fire department to see that, to make decisions based on that, really showed us that it's a very valuable tool. So, the funding that we're asking for is a drone program.
So, you guys would just jointly share it?
Yes, and it would be available to our neighboring agencies through mutual aid. So, the tribe, the sheriff's office, their dive team, absolutely be available for them.
Yeah, we figured this would be a great opportunity for us to partner together with this type of project. Typically, when there's an emergency, one of our agencies is the lead agency and the other one's a support agency.
Right.
So, saying it's in some of the fire hazardous materials, so while my, while my firefighters are out mitigating the problem during those types of things, we have the potential for the officer to be flying the drone and be giving us feedback, and vice versa with a different type of incident.
Josh, wasn't there a request put into the Revenue Sharing Board? I thought I remembered something about it, for a drone.
Years ago, the sheriff's office put in a request for a drone. I think that was when Ken Falk was the sheriff.
Okay.
So, that would be four, five-ish years ago. I think that was somewhere thirty, forty thousand dollars. And so, as this technology develops and is more accessible to civilians, it drives the cost down.
Great.
So, the application, the amount that we're requesting would fund the equipment, the training for the officers, both for police and fire.
Okay, I thought I remembered something about us talking about it before.
We tried. So, years ago, we tried to see what it would take for a drone, and again, when you look at grants, you look at what's the priority.
Right.
And so, we saw this opportunity to partner up and say, this is a window that might be a great opportunity for us to utilize these funds if they were granted, and so, it was just natural for the police and fire to team up on it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Request to approve the amendments to the rules governing the City of Manistee Downtown Development Authority. City Commissions review the bylaws on an annual basis. At their July 10th, 2024 meeting, the Manistee Downtown Development Authority, DDA, reviewed their governing rules, bylaws, and voted to make amendments. The following amendments are requested, changing the allowed number of consecutive unexcused absences from three to two, and updating the meeting time to 8:30 a.m. The proposed amendments to the governing rules were reviewed by the city attorney. At this time, council could take action to approve the amendments to the Manistee DDA governing rules. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of approving a temporary activity permit. Echo His Love is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population located in the City of Manistee to be housed in one location throughout the winter. This would allow for people experiencing homelessness to be sheltered for five months from November 1st, 2024 until March 31st, 2025. At Echo His Love, main campus addressed at 525 Michael Street in Manistee, Michigan. Temporary activity permits are allowable via the zoning ordinance, section 522 and section 507. At this time, council could take action to approve the temporary activity permit requested by Echo His Love to follow, following sheltering of homeless population in the City of Manistee at one location throughout the winter. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Chief, we haven't had any problems up there since we discussed this last thing.
We haven't. We communicate very well with them, our officers, any kind of problems arise, we work to mitigate.
I didn't remember anything, so I thought I'd better check.
Is that, that facility big enough to support all our homeless, or no?
You know, I can't answer that question. I think it's probably better suited from someone from Echo.
I didn't know.
I'll defer that question.
Thanks.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Carter. I work for Echo His Love, the Safe Harbor Director, and you had that question. Can you ask that question again?
I, I just asked if the facility that we're talking about is adequate to fit the homeless population that we're talking about.
Not for all of Manistee. Last year, we had, last season, we had 53 homeless population. We actually had to turn 30 away, which was 80. We do have a limitation of 25 that we're able to safely put in the building with our volunteers and what we have, but we do give other, if somebody does call, we give other avenues for them. We contact NMCA for housing and seeking other places during that time. So, is the building big enough? No. We always, so if anybody knows a bigger place, I'm all ears.
How many, how much is that up from the year before?
I'm saying.
How much is that up from the year before?
Year before, we had, you talk about for the homeless?
Yeah.
We only had, the year before, we only had 22 guests off-season. This last season, we have seen an increase, a spike homelessness. We had 53 for the whole season, but the first month, we actually broke that record of 20, 25, 26 homeless in that very first month. The season before, we had off-season, we had like 22. We have seen an increase of younger population and families as well, so.
So, I have a question that relates to this, but it's a little different. So, several people have asked, I mean, obviously, there's a homeless population year-round, not just in the winter.
Correct.
So, what are we doing about that in the better weather seasons, like spring and summer? My understanding is that they can get tents?
Correct. We are providing tents, we're providing what we can. NMCA is still working on solving that issue during those times. We would love to get to a point, Echo would love to get to the point that we're all year-long.
Yeah.
But, that's going to take a lot of work, you know, on the community and whatnot. We even decided, we even started a program called HARC, which is the Homeless Advocacy Resource Coalition, that's trying to solve that problem as well. So, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Motion approved. Thank you. Resolution and thanks of appreciation. At this time, council will take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation for Planning Commissioner Roger Yoder. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Is Roger here?
He is.
Oh.
I could see you.
Resolution of thanks and appreciation, Roger Yoder. Whereas Roger Yoder has served actively and faithfully for 40 years with the American Planning Association of Michigan, and whereas Roger was appointed to the City of Manistee Planning Commission on January 3rd, 1984, and has consistently participated as involved integral member of the commission since his appointment, and whereas Roger serves the City of Manistee and the Manistee community with pride and dedication. Whereas during his time with the City of Manistee Planning Commission, Roger has always demonstrated outstanding initiative and professionalism in the execution of his commission duties and responsibilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the City of Manistee Council and the citizens of this community, we give thanks and appreciation to Roger Yoder for his long and faithful service to the community. Say if not, this resolution. Okay, now, we will have a report from the Manistee Historical Museum and Historic District Commission.
Looks like the font is off a little bit there. Maybe this looks a little more postmodern than I intended it to be, but that should say museum instead of muse.
But, so it goes.
It might be that little goofy throughout, but that's what I get for using weird fonts. Anywho, I'm very happy to be here again for my annual update to City Council about what we've been up to in the exciting world of local history. I'm going to divide this up and really into three very brief topics, and if anyone has any other questions about this after this, be, feel free to come down to the museum and ask away, but I will break it down fairly really quickly. Yeah, fonts are off there. I'm very briefly going to mention the Historic District Commission. Teresa Waldo will go a little bit more in-depth with that next, right after me. Briefly talk about the museum itself, and then the community and what we've been up to throughout the community. So, first, Historic District Commission. I continue to work with potential property owners on the history of their buildings. Oftentimes, when someone comes in, bought a new building, or bought a building here on River Street or within the district, they want to know all about the history about it, and if we have photographs, and who owned it, and who was inside of it, and what did they sell, and so on and so forth. I'll work with them in order to find out all of those details. I've been with the museum for about 16 years now, so some of that comes to mind right away, and other times, I really have to dig for it. But, it's a lot of fun to meet new people who are interested in history and interested in the history of Manistee and of their buildings, so it's always a lot of fun to do that. I work with potential building owners, business owners, planning and zoning, realtors, environmental specialists on various aspects of historic buildings, including research of, as I mentioned, when the building was built, who built it, who occupied it. Oftentimes, my reach kind of extends outside of the Historic District Commission into various aspects of the city, especially when it comes to environmental specialists. They kind of want to know all about who is there and what, if it was a manufacturing site, who manufactured it there, what did they manufacture, so on and so forth. So, really a lot of fun to get with those people and to find out, try to answer their questions. In regards to Historic District Commission, I have, I'm able to approve certain things like signage, some paint colors, routine repair and maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. This past year, we've kind of tweaked those a little bit, so we have kind of had, got a subcommittee from out of the Historic District Commission itself that meets or discusses those things and whether or not they're approvable and so on and so forth, and then we present them to the Historic District Commission if they're approvable. So, a little bit of everything that kind of goes into the Historic District Commission or my work with it, and once again, always a lot of fun to get with those people and to discuss some things. Moving on, I'm going to briefly talk about the museum. September of last year to August of this year, we had 1,376 visitors. That's a little bit below average. The bridge closure kind of threw some people, I think, off the beaten path a little bit, and so, so just down just a little bit, but, but, but about on par with what we're used to. We, of those visitors, we had 53 researchers, and as I usually mention, these are people doing research on their homes, on their properties, on their, in their family tree. So, we have all the tools there at the museum that will hopefully help those people out, and you get to meet a lot of neat people and people from different countries that come here and research their family tree, and of course, people who are really excited when they buy that new, when they buy a new house here and they want to know all the history of it and who built it and, and maybe who died in it, if they hear some bumps in the night. They have to have a held a funeral there. Always a lot of fun to do that with people and to find out a little bit more history about those houses. And myself, I get to learn something new every day, and so, that's part of the fun of it. We also were active this summer with an exhibit that we had called Early Remarkable Manistee Women, and we highlighted about 25 different women who really had a foothold here in Manistee early on, from about 1880s to about the 1940s, and a couple from the 1960s and 1970s. And that was a lot of fun to research and a lot of fun to put together, and it's been pretty well-attended over the course of the summer. I continue to write articles for the Manistee News Advocate. This is something that my predecessor, Steve Harold, started in 1976, so that's about 50 years' worth of articles, all highlighting aspects of Manistee, of the City of Manistee as well as Manistee County and the abundant history that we have here. Couple of those are repeated from time to time, but that's literally thousands upon thousands upon thousands of articles about Manistee's history, and most of the time, it's a lot of fun to put together as well. I can also continue down with, in the newspaper, the 20, 40, 60, 80 years ago. This is something I started 12 years ago, so I got about eight years left to kind of go back to, the 20 years ago becomes 40 years ago, and so on and so forth. So, always get a lot of good comments about that, and a lot of people calling me up and saying, that was me, or I can't believe that was 60 years ago, or so on and so forth. In addition to this, we also do the 100 Years Ago column for the newspaper, and once again, highlighting our local history, what was happening in Manistee and this week 100 years ago. So, we have about every 20 years covered for about 100 years there. So, that's, that's, that's something that's really a lot, once again, a lot of fun to do. Kind of looking forward into the future of the museum, the buildings are about 140 years old, and so, it's probably time to start thinking about the future a little bit. And so, this past summer, we had, we hired the Hopkins Burns Architects, the preservation architects out of Ann Arbor, and they're in the process right now of doing a complete top-to-bottom study on the museum to kind of help us look toward the future in terms of the mechanics of the building, the display areas, so on and so forth. We want to keep the uniqueness of the building, but also realize that a lot of things need to be updated in it. So, we're in the process of doing that right now at the museum, and hopefully, we'll have, of course, we'll have a big fundraising campaign and so on and so forth, but got to start somewhere, and so, that's, that's kind of our hope for the future. Building certainly needs it. In terms of the community, I've been very active throughout. These are a couple of photographs and a couple odds and ends that I was involved in over the last year. I worked with Sammy at the Tourism Authority for the West Michigan Tourism Association. We gave them a big tour in the trolley and told them some tales about Manistee's history, had a good time in doing so. I helped out several times with the Manistee County Library Homeschool Group and got to show them around the museum and, and tell them the stories about a lot of the artifacts inside of it. Once again, I've been saying that a lot this evening, but a lot of fun to do, and it's always kind of neat to have some kids come back to and say, hey, I brought my parents and I wanted to show them this cool place, or the two-headed calf that sits back there, which kind of is a unique thing. But, it's, but, but always nice to work with the library, too. I was also involved in the Manistee County Chamber Leadership Group History Day. Sammy and I were a part of that. I gave them a brief history of River Street and how it all developed and what happened, and then we did a nice hour-long tour of River Street and highlighted several of the neat buildings there and told the stories behind a lot of those buildings. Then, we went to, we did a trolley tour of the city. We went out to the Calveville Bottle House, and then we toured the city of Milwaukee and really had a nice day of it. So, once again, a lot of fun to do. I also gave several lectures throughout the community over the year. Manistee County Summit over at the Wagner Center a couple of times, at the Farr Center in Oneakama, did a tour, did a talk about city parks at the Outsider Restaurant, did several bus tours from the Detroit area, also gave a talk to the Planning Commission, also gave a talk at the Old Kirk Museum, too, as well. Other, other, other things that I've been involved in, I was asked to be a part of the Ad-Hoc Events Committee and sat on that and kind of hammered out some ideas on the Sleigh Bell Parade and Old Christmas Weekend with a lot of other folks that were involved in that as well. And then, Chief Herndon, myself, Sarah Herberger from the Manistee County Foundation, and retired Manistee firefighter Fred LaPointe have been working on getting all of our ducks in a row to get the fire department building on the National Register of Historic Places. It's in the Guinness Book of World Records, it's on the State Register of Historic Places, but it is not yet on the National Register of Historic Places, and we all hope to rectify that. So, we've been busy over the last several months in collecting history of it and so on and so forth. So, so, yeah, so it's been a pretty active year overall. Do I have any questions from, from, from any of the council members?
Anybody? Just appreciate you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Teresa Waldo will report on the Historic District Commission.
So, first, I just want to say thank you so much. We appreciate everything you've done.
Absolutely.
Have been wonderful to work with and agree with. So, I'm here today. My name is Teresa Waldo, and thank you all for having me tonight. I'm going to be speaking, well, Teresa Waldo, Community Development Director, Planning and Zoning, also help with the Historical District Commission. So, this is our annual report for 2024. So, first of all, what is the HDC, Historical District Commission? The HDC is Historically Significant Area that is protected by historical or Historic District Ordinances. The local unit of government appoints a Historical District Commission to review proposed work to the exterior of resources in the district to determine if the work meets the Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines for Rehabilitation. The Historical District was established under Chapter 1280 of the Codified Ordinances, and the Historical District Commission was established under Chapter 257 of the Codified Ordinances. So, what is the purpose of the HDC? Well, it allows owners to apply for tax credits. It grants opportunities through SHPO, which is the State Historical Preservation Office. It contributes to economic vitality and connections to the past. Local Historical District designation enhances property values. Responsibilities of the HDC. All properties within the Manistee Commercial Historical District must receive an approval from the Historical District Commission for additions, any alterations to the exterior of the building, any changes in paint color and signage. Applications for a certificate of appropriateness must be submitted no less than 10 days prior to a regularly scheduled Historical Commission meeting. The Historical District Commission uses the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So, some guidelines that we have. So, what is the guidelines? Guidelines are rules, instructions or suggestions that provides guidance on how something should be done. These guidelines have been developed by the Historical District Commission to assist applicants. So, our guidelines, we have many. So, one, for example, is awnings, signage, doors, windows, rear entrance, painting, front facade, storefronts, infill construction, energy conservation, air conditioners, murals and demonstrations. So, one of these that I want to set as an example is number four, guidelines for windows. So, any glass size changes to a window require approval for them from the Historical District Commission. Storefront windows, the storefront displays, window displays and plays a big important for merchandising role in the traditional downtown, and it should continue to do so today. Storefronts had very large window areas. This made maximum use of an available natural light and allowed potential customers a full view of the store. So, original windows are to be repaired, not replaced. Replacement windows will not be approved if existing originals are repairable. Any new windows must fit the original opening. The window's opening must be, must never be altered. If a material other than wood is used for the frame, its color, detail must match the original as closely as possible. A non-metallic finish should be used, and all of these are directly out of the City of Manistee's guidelines, number four, windows. So, who is on the HDC? Membership consists of not less than seven or more than nine members for a local unit having a population of more than 5,000. A majority of members must clearly demonstrate interest in or knowledge of the historical preservation. So, our current members in year appointed, we have Catherine Kenny, who is our chair, Angie Quinn, the vice chair, Lee Trucks, Ron Humboldt, Thad Taylor, Cheryl Stevenson and Ed Criswitz. and Ed Chriswitz. Applying for Tax Credit. So at the state level, available to income-producing properties and private residents. Federal, only available to properties that will be used for income-producing purposes. So the properties in the Historical District are there designated on the map. Permit Review. So these are our COAs, Certificate of Appropriateness. As you can see, in 2022, they had 16. 2023, they had 25. This year currently so far, in 2024, we've had 13. So of those 13 permits, five were signs, and eight were repairs or maintenance. So do you have any questions for me this evening?
I have some questions.
Okay.
What's the energy conservation?
I honestly don't know much about it. I would have to read the guidelines to get my...
Okay.
I've never had anybody approach me about that, so that's one that I've just not had time to review.
I just, I've got questions because I'm like looking up and down River Street, and some of this is like contradicting. So is there like a list of the paint colors that are to be used?
Well, the paint colors, a lot of time, I will meet with Mark. And then Mark, if you want to help with that?
Yeah, you probably referred to Katrina. That was my, that was my call. I was, I was in the middle of a family emergency, and the gentleman came in, showed to me the paint colors on the phone, on his phone. And I usually have, I usually take the time to review all that stuff, and I didn't. And so when I, yeah, it was bad. Not, not, not very good on my part. I applaud them for certainly sprucing up the building, but I dropped the ball on it. And so then I got with Teresa and Catherine Kenny, our chair, and we attempt, are attempted to kind of rectify the process of how things are approved. And instead of going directly to the museum director, I will be part of the discussion in terms of that subcommittee, as I mentioned, that will then report back to the Historic District. So we've kind of changed some of the way in which we do things.
Okay.
So that, that came to that, and I certainly feel a lot more comfortable doing it, and I think the commission, and I think, yeah.
Okay. And then I'm just wondering why there's a subcommittee for the commission? Like, what's the purpose of that?
If you want to answer that, yeah.
Sure. So before, it was just going to Mark. And then, like I said, we kind of had talked and said, "Let's do a subcommittee." So at least there's five people looking at it ahead of time. That way, they can bring, before we're at an actual meeting, to review and look at the process, see what they have, what the materials are, and to get back with them. The other thing with the subcommittee, we're trying to implement things faster. So the smaller things that we can process and get through and sign off and get done easier. But what we're finding is a lot of things still need to go to the Historical District Commission.
So wouldn't it be faster just to send it to the, just, I mean, there's so many people touching one thing now. Wouldn't it just be faster? That'd be like us having a committee to, like, a bunch of committees and...
Well, what it is, is they have 10 days beforehand to bring it to the commission. What if they have a day after the last meeting? Now they have to wait six or seven weeks till the next meeting, or a month, I should say.
And that has happened.
To the next meeting, and people having to wait that long. So we were trying to implement this to make it faster.
That has happened before, where someone will say, "I need this right away because I have to get this in under the wire because I'm getting grant funds," and then, well, our meeting isn't until...
Yeah, a month later.
You know, 25 days later. Certain things like signage, decals, stuff like that, I'm available, available to approve that. Certain routine repair and maintenance things as well, paint colors, bigger projects. I, a couple of those need, need a few more eyeballs on them.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have.
Teresa, is there any thought about, I don't know, when those ordinances were enacted? The problem is, from a safety standpoint, when some kids come through town, they break the windows, I mean, they cost the owner a bunch of money to fix these windows and all that. I've been on when the kids took the windows right out of the building. And so is there any thought about changing the height and width or down a little bit?
So with some of those, first, you know, always contact our building inspector. So that way, he knows which windows have been taken out. So maybe the owner doesn't live in town, maybe they're out of the area, and they don't know about that. So then we would have to contact the owner, let them know. But then after that, it would be, you know, from there, we'd have to look at what the guidelines say about replacing that and everything. But we can always, you know, attempt maybe to go board it up if it needs to be, if it's a safety issue. The building inspector would definitely take care of it.
I mean, is there any thought about changing that, or changing the ordinance so they could make smaller windows? I know it's nice to see inside the building.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
I mean, you know, I used to like to see, so I could see if anything was going on.
Right.
And but, you know, some of this is expensive for the owners.
Right. Yes, that is true. I can bring it to my commission and talk to them about it.
I decided to throw it out.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Might as well stay there because you're up next with Tracy Davis for the short-term rental question. Thank you, Mark.
Hi, I'm Tracy Davis, and I'm with Housing North. And I think everybody knows Teresa.
Yep.
So today, we just wanted to have more of a discussion about short-term rentals. And I think all of us have come to the place that there needs to be something that we do about short-term rentals. So I'm going to kind of take you through a little bit about some of the information and resources. And I do want to make sure that everybody knows this is draft format. Athena's finalized. This is, I don't know how many drafts we're into, but it's still all draft at this point. And in your packets today is updated information as of maybe 6:00 tonight. So the information that you read earlier is no longer valid. Some of the pieces are, but the most current is in your packet in front of you right now. So the purpose of having a short-term rental ordinance is to protect the public health, safety, general welfare, residents, property owners, as well as our visitors, by regulating short-term rentals. The aim is to prevent nuisance, safety hazards that could disrupt the daily activities of city residents and property owners, and to ensure that there's safe, healthy living accommodations for our visitors who rent properties for short-term, on a short-term basis. So it's really that balance that we're trying to have between what our residents need and want in our local neighborhoods, as well as, we are a tourist community, so we do need to look at what and how to accommodate having visitors. So some of the things we looked at, again, in 2019, there was a recommendation from the Rising Tide program that asked us to look at short-term rentals and said that was one of the things that we really needed to do as a city. So that's really part of where we got started. I've also shared earlier a Housing North seasonal population study with very specific information having to do with Manistee County. And you can see that in the months of July and August, we more than double the population of visitors to our county. MSU extension slides were also reviewed on short-term rentals and their recommendations. I talked about Rising Tide. We also went back and looked at prior discussions within the city, PowerPoints, the samples that we had from Luddington's short-term rental ordinances. And I've provided an in-depth review and information on the city of Frankfurt's short-term rentals. So really what, this is kind of a culmination of all those things. And what we'll see, and what you've seen, is I think people liked the Frankfurt framework. They have the short-term ordinance. They have administrative information and frequently asked questions. And we're going to go over all this in more detail. The registration form, their inspection checklist, and what is termed a Good Neighbor Guide. And again, we're going to go through all those things because I do think that they're important pieces to operating a program that will help the city and our residents, as well as our visitors. So some of the things that I, through Housing North and best practices that have really come about, especially in northern Michigan, because of our, short-term rentals are just abundant here. I know people from downstate aren't necessarily having the same concerns that we do for short-term rentals. So this is sort of a composite of local communities in this area. And one of the things that is being recommended is to carve out designated areas that short-term rentals are acceptable and allowable. And that might be along the lakeshore, the downtown development district condos. And then there would be limits to the short-term rentals that are in residential areas. What's been a common practice is imposing stiff penalties for non-compliant, unregistered short-term rentals, and typically, those fees are doubled. And I know that sounds pretty stiff, but it does encourage people to abide by the rules, to register in the program, and then ensure that there's inspections and you're able to account for those, those I talked a little bit, and we'll talk further, about the Good Neighbor Guide, but that really is to encourage what renters' expectations should be, and that we expect renters to be abiding by in our communities. I suggested that there be an online registration, as well as payment processing, because we don't, we want to be able to capture that, and you're more likely to capture through online payment than through a check that's going to come maybe with the registration. And there's a lot of confusion, as well as sometimes checks don't always go through. So. The other thing we'll talk about in some of the administrative pieces is that we would allow for temporary permits for registered units until inspections occur, incur, occur. So that would be, we'll have a timeline that everybody that has a short-term rental currently operates, they would need to register with the city and provide the paperwork, which includes insurance, the information about the rental, and payment. And they would be allowed to continue to operate until there's an inspection. So it's just a temporary permit at this point. And then it suggested that you also revoke permits for non-compliant, large violations, and non-payment, whether it is for the registration or for renewals. And then we also need to allow ample time for owners to address any findings that came through inspections. But I think one of the largest things that I'm very passionate about is making sure that we have accurate information about our current short-term rentals and the addresses that are actually operating short-term rentals. And I, we really don't have, we have some general numbers at this point, but we don't have those firm addresses. So it's going to make it harder for compliance if we don't know to begin with who has that. So there are a number of platforms. A lot of people, a lot of counties in northern Michigan use Granicus. Again, you don't need to use that platform, but that is one of the platforms. So I will have some further information from Granicus, but they can pinpoint the actual address. I talked with them in the last couple of days.
Can I ask you a question before I forget?
Yeah.
If they're, if we're trying to figure out the addresses, if they're already registered, we should have those addresses. If they're not registered and inspected, then, I mean, that's...
Are you saying Granicus will be able to, even if they're not registered?
Well, I mean, if we, if we do it like how we're talking about, and we eliminate, you know, waterfront in the commercial district and stuff, and the condos, most of them are already registered. So the houses, if they're registered and inspected, you know what those are. And if you're going to put a cap on it, then if those people aren't registered or inspected, that's their problem. Like, I mean, then they don't fall into the...
Once we get to that, knowing who's registered, because we don't know everybody that's registered at this point. But once we have that registration, you wouldn't have to have necessarily Granicus in year two and three. You'd have the initial identification of all the areas that have a short-term rental. And then they do have different sections or levels of identification. They will help with compliance, which is a different package, and they would help with collection of taxes. So they'll give you a variety of options. But in order for us to get to the point to know who's registered and not registered and enforce compliance, there are, I think, a lot of units that aren't registered at this point.
Okay.
That answers your question.
I have a question, too, if we can ask before we move on. So when you're talking about looking at going through like a registration process and having them inspected, if I already had a short-term rental and it's been inspected and it's labeled as a rental, because right now, we don't distinguish between short-term and long-term, is my understanding. Like, as long as I have it inspected as a rental, I could do it as a short-term, correct?
Right now, it's not acceptable to do really a short-term. We don't know whether they are or are not having it short-term. We don't know the length.
We have, we have been treating them as rentals, though, but there would be a distinction in terms of fees and the exact operation that would be defined with this new ordinance.
Changing that, I guess my question with that, though, is, so for example, I know several people that have short-term rentals. If they've already went through the process, it's been inspected, they have their three-year permit, or whatever that permit timeline is, they're going to have to go through that process again?
They'll have to go through the short-term rental.
Okay.
Process.
Yes. But they would be able, as we'll talk about in the frequently asked questions, they would be able to continue to operate until, regardless, as long as they register, until the inspection occurs.
So if you came through, or Jerry Blue came through and did a rental inspection, and he was like, "This isn't up to code. This isn't going to meet," they're not going to be able to operate temporarily at that point?
They'll be given a grace, a time period, to make those corrections.
Changes.
So they could still run it out during that time period?
Yes, but there will be a specific time period that they'll only be allowed, and it needs to be taken care of by that reasonable time period. So Teresa is going to review the ordinances that, the ordinance that you have in front.
So obviously, it's many pages, but some of the things that I just definitely wanted to talk about is, if you flip to, it'd be page one, two, page four. It's under Section 1485.99.
Please bring up the ordinance.
Violations and Administrative Penalties.
Which page? I'm sorry.
It's the next page after 1485.99, and it'd be letter C, number one. Yep, just one below. There. All right, so letter C, where it says number one. It says, "For a first violation with, within any calendar year, the penalty is a written notice of violation and a fine of This, number two, "The second violation would be the same calendar year, shall be subject to a municipal civil infraction citation and punishable by a fine..." to a municipal civil infraction citation and punishable by a fine of $250." And then, when you go to number three, "The third violation would be a municipal civil infraction punished by a fine and $1,000." And then, after that, the owner of such unit may reapply for any short-term rental permit no sooner than a 12-month after revocation of the short-term rental permit. It may be added to a waitlist of such permit that the city may attain by the owner's request." So, that's one area that I wanted to point out to you in there.
While they're looking at that, I'll just kind of talk briefly about some feedback I received from council regarding this. So, Teresa just went over the fines. I did have one council member saying perhaps we could up the first violation, second violation, so that's just something to think about. And then, there was a talk about prohibiting fireworks on the non-holidays at some of the rentals. So, just wanted to keep everyone aware of what some of the council members were saying. Also, I think we didn't touch on this, but a cap of 30 was something that came out of the ordinance committee outside of waterfront, the condos and the downtown. So...
Where'd you come up with that 30 number? I was curious.
The thought was to limit them in neighborhoods, and that was just kind of...
I think Luddington is 30, I think.
Luddington's 30?
But I think the difference with Luddington is they knew how many they had. We have a lot out here that we don't even know we have, and there was one around the corner from me that was operating for three years as a homesteaded property. So, I guess my concern with saying we're going to put a cap with a number right now is you don't even know the exact data, so we're just throwing out a number of 30, but we don't know how many we have.
Didn't we, in some of the council packets, maybe, wasn't there like a 170 number out there that we thought we had for short-term rentals?
See, at the top, that's the Air DNA number from zip code 49660. So, we did have a Granicus report a while back that was more specific than that. This is the most specific from some free data from the Tourism Authority.
So, we're thinking we have 170 out there right now?
That's the 49660 area that includes the city, includes Manistee Township, and includes Villar Township. But they weren't able to specifically identify addresses, so that's just a, an estimate at this point.
Okay.
So, I think the point that you're making is valid, that if we don't know what we actually have in terms of, you know, if you make a hard number, you might want to consider a percentage, as opposed to just picking a number at this point because you don't know what you have.
I mean, I personally would feel better with a percentage or else getting some, even if it was rough, some actual data before we put a number on it, because this seems like we're just throwing something at the wall and hoping it sticks, and that never usually goes well.
Well, since we don't know how many there actually are out there, how are we proposing to figure that out?
So, if you look in the next steps, that, it is something that, I think originally when we discussed this, well, there's been several times we've discussed this, but one was purchasing that tool that's going to monitor the sites to find out what, how many we actually have.
That's the Granicus that I had mentioned, the company?
So, it monitors like Airbnb and Verbo and that kind of stuff?
Correct, yeah. And it's monitoring daily, too.
Doesn't the tourist have a, the authority have a system that...
Not to that, but you don't have it to that degree where it's checking every day and updates, I don't believe.
Yes, but it's not going to pinpoint everything. We don't know every short-term rental that's out there, especially if they're doing rent for a year.
Yeah.
And short-term rentals are also seasonal. Some people are renting their places out in summer, some in winter, some not in winter. So, it's going to fluctuate every single month, and all Granicus does, just like Arrivalist or AirDNA that we use, it crawls Airbnb, Verbo, all of the vacation rental type websites to look for short-term rentals. But you have to have a definition of what the city deems as a short-term rental.
Right.
How many days is it going to be rented? You have to figure out where each of the short-term rentals are located, and I'm not getting a ping every single day that says it's on the street or it's wherever else. But you also have to rely on the fact that folks are actually going to register, which they're not all members of the Tourism Authority. We only have a section of rental companies that are within properties that pay the assessment. So, there's no short-term rental operators out there that aren't paying the assessment with a profit in front of it.
Just say for the summer, summer months, June, July, and August, what is your system showing for, have you looked up that number? Can you give us an idea of what you're seeing?
Today, and as of today, there are 151 within the 49660.
And that's separate than AirDNA, correct? You've got a different system?
It is AirDNA.
It is AirDNA, okay, thank you.
So, one of the things, when I spoke to Granicus in the last couple of days, is they did say that they could give us weekly reports, because they do fluctuate, as she mentioned, from winter months to weekly, you know, July and August, as I mentioned, are the height of the season. So, they would, if, if you're interested in that company, they would go ahead and give us a package of the different levels and what it all includes. So, that's how we do that.
Do you keep track of all these people that are from out of town that are buying the houses here to use them for short-term?
I know. I don't keep track of that, but a part of the seasonal population study, they would be a part of the seasonal population study that was done in July of last year.
And our assessor is making a note of them when she finds them. She's making a note.
Do we ever consider, I think like some towns have put in through their zoning, only so many short-term in, like say, our districts, they could only put so many? Are we ever going to think of that?
Well, I think that's, that's a part of this policy, that, how we're going to limit that and the number or percentage that we would limit.
Because right now, they're all over the place, and we don't have any limit.
Right. And I think Teresa also wanted to update in the policy or the ordinance that...
So, the ordinance applies to all residential zoning districts, but what I want to talk about is which ones will be excluded. So, excluding condominium developments containing eight individual condominium units or more, hotels would be excluded, motels, and units rented for less than two weeks for calendar year, waterfront along Dune Drive and other waterfront areas that we designate, and the DDA, the Downtown Development District.
When you're saying unit, that'd be any house, right?
Like, unit or condo, unit or home, yes.
But like, any homeowner could rent their house out for two weeks or less?
Yes.
Okay.
But is that at a time?
That was in a year, right?
Yes, said for a year.
Location, that's right, that.
Any other questions within the ordinance that we might be able to answer before we go on to, I think the next thing was...
The only thing that I had was Teresa was talking about the third violation.
Mm-hmm.
And then, after 12 months, I think like after the third violation, they should just be done, like it shouldn't be a...
Three strikes, you're out.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I do think that was a part of the original recommendation. I mean, we may put in something like there's a cooling period that in a year they could reapply, but they'd have to go, they're off, permits revoked, they would go back on the waitlist till someone fell off the list that, for our limited amounts.
And again, this is...
Even if they operate in an area that we say the DDA, and they have their three strikes, they're out, they're still not able to operate until whatever timeframe has decided upon by the group. Maybe permanently, maybe a year.
So, I have a question. Okay, if somebody was operating a short-term rental, they get to the strikes, you're saying they're out, there's nothing that would prevent them from then making it a long-term rental, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, this ordinance is just draft, so whatever we can change, tweak...
Is this by property or by owner? Could they go buy a different property? Same thing?
It's by prop... Tell me, tell me the question again.
Is this by owner or is it by property?
By property.
So, they could go and buy a different property?
Mm-hmm. Well, if...
Like, two strikes at one location isn't going to prevent me if I have one strike at another. It's not going to add together to make three.
Well, unless there's a regus.
No, but I'm saying like after the strike.
Could, so that one property is being eliminated? Well, I don't know. I think we need to discuss that. You know, is it a review of what's happening at the other properties, and there's a strike there as well, or have they haven't paid registration fees? If they haven't paid registration fees?
Or is it just to that property, and let's say it's fixing something, repairs or something along that line, then that would be just that property. And then, Jerry would go out, make sure that those things were done, but if they had a different property, that's something different. So, I guess it just depends on the situation.
But if you go 148505, number seven, talks about the written confirmation that the owner does not have partnership, or doesn't have ownership interest in more than one other premises for which a short-term permit has been issued or is being sought. What's, I guess, what's the purpose of that paragraph? I think that's what, I think it's...
What number was that?
That was number seven?
Number seven? Grab it here.
I thought that looks like it's kind of limiting the number of STRs that an individual can have. And I think that's what council member Pratt, you were asking, correct?
Yeah.
Or somebody was.
Well, yeah, Aaron, and then I just had mentioned, like, the strike issue didn't necessarily count for all the properties that we discussed.
Right, understood, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. But even this, more than two, some people probably have more than two now.
Yes.
Yes.
So, what happens to those individuals?
Aren't they grandfathered until they change hands?
They would be, they would be considered compliant until inspection occurred or if they're in the areas that you're carving out if you choose to do that. So, I think we go back to the PowerPoint, I don't know, is that what it says? It is, okay. So, some of the things that we talked about, so we'll do the FAQ next. So, it looks multi-page in your packet. I can go through each one if you'd like to, like me to do that. So, I think one of the main questions that we hear a lot is, what happens if my short-term rental property is sold? Is it transferable? No, it is not. So, the new owners would need to register, and there would be a 15-day timeline for them to register once the property is sold in order to operate that short-term rental. If they fail to do that, then they would not be allowed to operate a short-term rental. How do you schedule the inspection? I think that's pretty self-explanatory. It'll go through the building inspector. What happens if there's not a local contact? We would need to be able to have some type of connection with either in person or via the phone if something occurred, but the preference is to have a local contact, whether it's a property manager or an individual.
I guess that's a concern for me. I don't know why we would not be able to get a local contact even if it was a neighbor. I mean, trying to get ahold of a property owner in a different state who might be working or have a personal issue, like, that makes no sense to me.
If we want to, I would say that other people have experienced issues with that, so that might be a requirement that you require, and we put that in the ordinance and make that change.
I mean, I can tell you from trying to contact a non-local property owner, when somebody's parked in your driveway and you have a clear fence up and they're running it as a short-term rental, so I mean, anybody could tell that wasn't their driveway. Sometimes you're waiting eight hours to get a vehicle moved, because those people are not at the house. Their car's there, but they're downtown eating, stuff like that, and you're leaving messages. So, it's an inconvenience to the neighbor when you have to park on the street because your parking is taken up by a guest, and I wasn't getting paid for it. So, I can see why that would upset neighbors, but I feel like there has to be a local contact, like, in my opinion, that's just what I'm saying, but there has to be somebody boots on the ground who's responsible. And if I was out of state looking at running a short-term rental, I guess that might motivate me to pair up with one of the agencies or companies locally that is doing that so that they can be the middle person.
I think when we had the ordinance review, I don't know if you remember, Jermaine, we talked about having a local person, and their sign should be on the house or outdoors, that they should have somebody there locally, so you can call, so the police can get ahold in case there's something going on.
Yeah, I wrote notes next to that, that you're looking to require that, and as well as make sure that it's added as a requirement on the registration form.
Well, and I think that kind of speaks to what Mr. Chick was talking about last time I was here and this time as well. You know, if you're a resident living in that area and you, you've got chaos going on around you because nobody's holding these rental people responsible, that doesn't work for our local community. So, that's the part that I have a hard time feeling about.
Sir, please, don't talk. We're just having a discussion right now. Thank you.
All right, so I will add that in as a requirement and change that. What does the registration fee cover? It covers inspection time, fees, any attorney fees that may result, any publications that the city has for short-term rentals, including online, registration permits, stickers, printing. What it does not include is from Public Act 59, so we are not, we do not collect that. We are not responsible for that. The property owner is responsible for that, and that's normally referred to as the pillow tax. And we're encouraging, in these guidelines, we're encouraging the property owners to pass that pillow tax on to the visitor, the renter. And one of the things Granicus said that they're able to do also is help with ensuring and capturing that, that tax that they're supposed to be paying. So, how does the renewal process work? 60 days before a short-term rental unit's permit expires, the city will send them a renewal application, and then they have the choice between there being a one, two, and three-year fee that they can choose from, as long as there are no violations in our ordinance standards or any severe violations of, whether it's the good neighbor policy or anything else. When would the permits first be awarded? So, once the council, if they would choose to move forward, we're hoping and looking tentatively, I know we put January 1, but early January would be the time, but in order to be considered compliant, there would be a registration time period. People would have to register their units during that, that time period, that grace period, to be considered compliant, and then they would receive a temporary permit, because obviously, we can't do inspections. And then they would receive a temporary permit, because obviously we can't do inspections as soon as someone registers. It's gonna be a process to connect with the property owner and then schedule those visits. We talked already about the excluded areas for the limitation. So the ordinance applies to residential zoning districts, and as Teresa mentioned, um, con, um, the condo developments, um, with eight condominium units or, or more, hotels, motels, um, units rented less than two weeks, um, along the waterfront, and then the DDA would be the carve-out areas. What happens if they miss the initial, uh, short-term registration deadline? Um, they miss it or choose not to participate in it? Um, the fee would be two times the original amount before they would be able to receive, uh, permit. And that's pretty much the standard that, um, counties are seeing, is the two-times fee. Um, and I think we'll talk about those fees, the suggested fees, a little bit later. If there is a three-year, somebody chooses to take the three-year renewal for the, um, short-term rental permit, um, and they only receive one-year proof of insurance, that's, that will be okay. They'll just annually have to provide that in order to stay in compliance. Is an inspection by the, um, Manistee City required prior to, um, awarding a short-term rental permit? I think I covered that it would be in that registration period, and they'd be allowed to operate. Uh, there will be a, um, inspection sheet that will be posted on the website of, of what, uh, the building inspector will be looking at, and then that will also be provided to anybody that does, um, register.
Would that be the same sheet as, that we do for long-term rentals, or would that be?
Um, I'd have, I'd have to review it.
Okay.
Um, and I'm sure if, if we choose that that makes sense, that we can do that. I, I'm just not familiar with that one.
Okay.
Will I be issued a civil infraction if I have, um, that should be, no. I, I have filed the required documents but not, have not received the permit? Um, and can, can I continue to advertise? So they will be allowed to continue to advertise. If they've got their paperwork in and they're working with the city, and there's progress being made, because we understand that maybe whatever has to be fixed might not be able to happen in a two-week time period. Then they would be allowed to continue, but there needs to be that good faith effort that, um, it is happening. How will people, um, on the waiting list be notified? So once the short-term rental drops below in the residential areas, thirty or percentage, or whatever it is that you decide, um, the first person on the waiting list would be contacted and given fifteen days to respond. Um, if they fail to respond, um, and/or register, and registration would have to be complete, including the fee and all the additional paperwork. If they fail to make that, after the fifteen days, we just go on to the next person. And they go back to the, um, end of the list if they choose to, um, ask to be on the list. There's the contacts for the short-term regulation, uh, or short-term register, stration information, and the inspector that is listed, and, um, how to be removed from the short-term registration list. I think Teresa's gonna talk a little bit about that. And how can I pay my registration fee? So that's pretty basic at City Hall here, but again, I do recommend that you do online payment.
And we did upgrade our BSNA module, so we think that should be an option. I'm not sure when that'll be available.
Um, and I think Teresa's gonna talk about the fee schedule, um, that's being suggested, as well as, we, we wanna go back to the PowerPoint, as well as, um, the removal of registration.
Yep. So this is, excuse me, the Be a Good Neighbor Guide. Now, this is the guide that would be, um, recommended, or would be a must, that it needs to be posted there in the home, along with it, they would get this material in their packet. So as you can see, this is Be a Good Neighbor Guide, and it's just a guide for short-term rentals. So we have the city's address, um, our telephone number to our office, and also the website. It's telling you, um, just a little bit about our history of Manistee, beaches, historical downtown, shops, restaurants, all of that. Also, we give the, um, ordinance information under that. And then underneath there, it's going to say vacation rental address, so they know in case of an emergency what that address is there. Also, the twenty-four-hour contact name, which Seth had said that he'd like somebody, um, local. And then the contact phone and contact email. Also, at the bottom, we gave our emergency and urgent care phone numbers, the hospital, police department, non-emergency, and the sheriff, non-emergency. Then as you look at, on the right, it just, some things that we want to highlight and let them know about noise, disturbance, fires, fireworks. To keep noise to a level that is considerate of neighbors. Fires and fireworks are regulated. Quiet time is eleven PM to seven AM. Then parking, please use the rental off-street parking spaces or off-street municipal parking. And then we're going to attach a map to this on the sec, on the back of that, so they'll be able to know where the parking is located. Before parking, um, in the street, note that alternate on-street parking is only allowed between November fifteenth to April fifteenth, and then twenty-four hours a day for snow removal. Under that, we have pets. Please keep all pets on leashes whenever they are in an enclosed area, including parks, beaches, public streets. And then please pick up the disposal of their waste. And then lastly, garbage. Garbage in public view must be in proper containers. And again, if you have any other suggestions that we should add to this, take away, um, let us know that, but that would be the guidelines. Any questions on that one? Um, next, if you could go to the, uh, registration form, please? So you have a copy of the City of Manistee's short-term res, uh, short-term rental registration form. Um, when Tracy and I just sat down, we noticed that our tiers are opposite of what they should be. So in the corner, the fee schedule, as you can see, we will start at the bottom. A one-year should be tier one, would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you opted to go to the two-year, which would be tier two, that would be a thousand dollars. And then if you opted for a three-year, which would be tier three, would be twelve fifty, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So what that's kind of encouraging is hoping that people who would do the three-year get that. Um, next, they would have to fill out all of the information that's listed below. And then it would be their responsibility of the property owner to contact us, the City of Manistee, for any information that would change. Is there anything on the registration form that you can see that we've missed or that we should add to it?
I think what we, I noted that we would add, um-
The require local contact, yep. Any other questions?
I do have one question. So on this, it says, what's the maximum, maximum occupancy? So, for like, a long-term rental, there is a limit based on like square footage and that, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Is it gonna be the same for short-term, or is it based on how many beds you can fit in there?
Nope, it is based off the square footage, and that's what Jerry would be inspecting and measuring, yep. It's the same rules.
Cause like, some advertise that they can sleep twenty-two people.
Right.
So I'm thinking this might be a shock for some people.
Right.
I mean, unless, it's the-
Are you done?
We're almost done.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Ben?
Yes.
So, you went through the Good Neighbor Guide, um, you, how do, they'll fall off?
Oh, yes. So we'll just go over this. Um, also in that ordinance that we had just talked about too, I brought up. But also, failure to renew registration permit, failure to sub, submit registration fees, um, violations, which we'll have those. Um, also referencing the Good Neighbor Guide, failure to pass inspection after a grace period has expired, would be another, um, way to fall off the list. Failure to remain in continuous operation for longer than six months plus one day. And transfer or sale of the property with it, without registering it within a fifteen-day window.
So I'm just kind of thinking about what Sammy had said earlier, some people rent for three months. Is that a short-term or a long-term? What constitutes, where, where does that line draw?
Right.
I think we'd have to, in the definitions, um, determine, and did we-
State that, right.
In the definitions, I, I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
Is there, um, a preference?
Well, or continuous operation, does that mean advertised but not necessarily rented? Or does it have to be rented?
Okay, so-
Not, not rented.
Okay, so, I'm at the end. Um, so the next steps that, um, we identified would be purchasing some type of platform to, um, ensure the correct addresses and tracking and compliance. And again, uh, you don't have to use Granicus, but there's that link there. Um, ordinance adoption, finalization of policies and procedures, and feedback from tonight from you, as well as, um, residents. Setting the initial registration timeline for the individuals that would be in compliance that are already currently operating the short-term rentals, as well as, I took a note about, um, we would need to outline and define the exact boundaries of the exempt carved-out area. So, um, that there's, it's clear and there's no question about that. And then, um, implement the program for twenty twenty-five. Anything else for us to consider?
I just, I just have one more question.
Sure.
So, if we are doing a, go back to this. So if we are doing a grace period for everybody that has a short-term rental to get certified and inspected, and if we do, like Mr. Pratt said, and just do a percentage, then we wouldn't really need to do this company, cause I'm not about spending fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for this company. If they don't get registered and inspected, then they're already out of compliance, so you can find them. Right?
How do we know, how do we know if they haven't registered?
Well, it's the same thing that we do with long-term rentals. Like, we don't know that some of them are long-term rented unless somebody says something. So, we're not gonna be able to catch every single one of them.
But I think the, what you want to do is have accurate data to know who those people are, which-
Right, what if we're spending twenty thousand dollars just to catch twenty rentals? I mean, that doesn't, that seems like a lot of money.
Right, and we'll have to see what their, their quote is.
Okay.
Yeah. But I do think it's really important that you know those addresses. And the registration fees will pay for what would cost to do that.
Okay.
They'll more than pay for it, you'll have lots left over.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, I lost my agenda here. Okay, Citizens Council, no?
No.
Sorry. Have a report from Jeff McCula on recycling. Sorry, I just kind of skipped over you.
Well, it's not a full report, but it's, um, a discussion item for you. For a number of years, uh, the city hosted its recycling for residents down in the Public Works Yard, within the parking lot at the city garage. Due to some concerns with congestion of traffic and citizens and the heavy equipment coming in and out, um, we relocated that to the industrial park, um, next to Central Wellness. Um, we enclosed, uh, existing parking lot with a fence, and we had cardboard recycling dumpsters, there was usually six of them there. We had the thirty-yard co-mingled, and we also were able to add bins for people to put brush, um, and then also to collect, uh, some of the compost and topsoil that we made. That operation seemed to, to work very well. In two thousand twenty, so we moved to that site in sixteen, in two thousand twenty, the city partnered with MCC. Um, there had been a shift in recycling, I won't go into all the details unless you, uh, care for me to spend time on it. But when China really, um, restricted the recycling, and they actually put a year hold on imported materials, and then they raised the compliance on, um, purity of their materials coming in, so it created a tremendous backlog, and it really devalued all the recycling commodities in the United States. So, the city went from being able to recycle cardboard at no cost. The value of that to Republic Services, sold that on a secondary market, was greater than what, than what it took for them to tip it and take it from us. So for years, we enjoyed free recycling in that, that aspect of it. After China changed its rules, then it became very expensive for us. And so, uh, we were starting to, and then also at the same time, council enacted ordinances that restricted, um, not putting out recycling or trash in refuse on River Street. And so, the downtown businesses were left without an outlet for that. So, all these kind of things co-mingled together, and we ended up partnering with Manistee Catholic Central, because they had a PCA trailer that they actually would receive revenues from, and they were able to use it on their students for various activities. For the city, it eliminated about fourteen thousand dollars a cost for that recycling. So it was very good for us for a number of years. Um, obviously, we know that MCC closed, and so that option went away for us. Since then, we've relocated the co-mingle tr-trailer over to what I, what we refer to as our cold storage area off of Veterans Oak Grove Drive. And then we've been researching, how do we solve the, the cardboard issue? So, there's a couple ways, uh, there's really three main options that we've looked at. One is, um, going, uh, curbside, so that everybody has a separate cart. You put your, all your recycling materials together in that. And if we did it citywide, then Republic, uh, would pick those up on a, uh, either, up to council, but it could be a bi-weekly or monthly basis. Um, we requested those quotes from Republic, um, quite a few months ago. But, new legislation came out this year, um, that by January of twenty twenty-six, communities of, was it more than five thousand residents, have to provide an opportunity for curbside recycling to ninety percent of its population. So that means within a couple, within a year and a half, less than a year and a half, we're gonna have to have curbside recycling as an option in this community. So, we were hoping to get those numbers back, um, and we were hoping to be able to put that in, kind of the choices for council. My belief is that Republic, all these communities now are asking for quotes, and so they're being inundated by that. They've gotta figure out, what do we do now that we're gonna collect all this more material, more routes, more everything? So, in the interim, um, the city manager reached out to PCA. PCA is willing to let the city have a PCA trailer. Those are designated only for schools, and I believe they have seven schools in the county or surrounding counties that they do that program with. They would allow the city to have one of those trailers, as long as we donated the, the revenue that's generated from that back to a school. So, we looked at, um, then we looked at two sites. Um, one is putting it by the co-mingled, and so, we could either put the PCA trailer there, or we could have the dumpsters put back there, and where people could just load their cardboard in the dumpsters. The dumpsters would have a tipping fee, and it's about a little over two thousand dollars a month to do that. So, quite a bit of money, but it would be a good short-term solution. Obviously, the trailer wouldn't cost us anything, but the concern is, because it was located at MCC- because it was located at MCC, MCC attracted people from well beyond the city limits. In fact, at least half the phone calls that we get at our office saying, hey, where do we take back cardboard? They don't live in the city. So everybody's looking for those options. Right now, I don't believe Hyler Township has an option for that and I know Manistee Township doesn't. So MCC was a solution for a big region here. So because that cold storage area is not fenced in, it's not controlled in any way, our concern is that we would end up with abuse, like with MCC went with. And that we would have a lot more problems than what it would solve. So we started discussions about, well, could we put it back in the DPW yard? That yard is fenced in, it's got a gate, right? So it's secured after hours. But what we've been discussing internally is paying an employee to be there on Saturdays and we'd have to determine how many Saturdays a month. But making it a Saturday period of time where you could bring your recycling there. We can control, we can check addresses, we can make sure that we can educate what materials are recyclable, which materials are not. Because some of the paper that people try to, you know, put in is not what PCA wants. But then also we can help people and train people to kind of stack that trailer. And so just wanted to get your thoughts on those options.
I have a question.
Billy, you have anything before that?
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, you mentioned that part of it was we have to give the money to a school. And I don't see any problem with that, but I guess I'm just wondering, like Manistee used to have a trailer and then I think they got rid of it. I mean, it's when I was in school, they had one and I don't think they have one now, the one that used to be behind. Because people were using that too. But my question is, have we had any discussion with CASMAN to see if that might be a site? Because maybe there's some kids that need community service hours and things like that. They might be able to help with that on a Saturday?
I don't think we've talked to them.
We haven't, we could talk to them. I think the point we're at now is that PCA did offer this to us, but they wanted a management plan. So we can control that, we could talk to CASMAN. But just seeing how it worked over at MCC, there are some good things and bad things, but I think that site would have been problematic in the summer without the students there, even though, you know, it closed, obviously it was a problem. But I think this is probably a better interim solution till curbside. But we could talk to CASMAN.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. If we're counting on volunteer hours to run something, that's not a good way to, it's not a good consistent way to do that.
No, the management.
We need to manage it. So that seems like a rough one. But, so if Republic is telling you that they just aren't available to do curbside at the moment? Or they're just inundated?
They haven't given us the quote on what it would take to service the community yet.
It seems like if we could start that sooner rather than later, that would solve all of our problems.
So I did meet with them last week and they did commit to having it to us by the end of the month. So the thought was we'd talk about it here today a little bit, maybe we come back in October with the quote and kind of finish the discussion.
Are we going to get a quote, sorry, are we going to get a quote from somebody else too?
Well, we're under contract with Republic right now, so that's who we solicited.
Till June 30th of next, so 2025.
But does the contract cover recycling services? Like, could we potentially have our trash services through Republic and our recycling through a different company?
I don't think everybody would play well in the sandbox with that one.
Might drive prices down.
Possibly the thought was we could bid it all out together if we wanted to do that, but-
I mean, I agree, I think curbside is the way to go if we can make it happen. Because right now, what you have is people just throwing it out. Because they're not holding on to it.
Problem you have with CASMAN though, is if you put a trailer there, they've got to put a fence across the driveway if it's in the back. And then people are going to throw it outside the fence.
Well, yeah, I just, I threw that out there only because in the past, Manistee has had one, they got rid of it. I don't think they're going to say, yeah, I want that back now. They got rid of it for a reason. So the only pool you really have is CASMAN if you're dealing with local. So I just wondered if there had even been a discussion to see if they were interested, because if they're saying no.
Well, what I think we learned out of the MCC situation was that that's not sustainable.
No.
And so I think that's not the best idea. I love that schools are going to benefit from this if we use a PCA trailer. If we use that PCA trailer, are you saying that would go in the DPW cold storage area?
Yeah, we just put, there's just two little sketches that I did. One would be to put it close to the salt barn so we could kind of consolidate the area that the public is visiting.
Into, yeah.
And then the other thing, that's where I would recommend starting off with it. Right now, that's where we just store all the old vehicles that need to be auctioned off. But since we're trying to go to this online auctioning, we can get vehicles removed within a month or two of them taken out of service. So I think that frees up a little bit of space and could be manageable. And then the other option that I put was if we needed more circulation. I mean, we've got to wait and see. But if we've got five thousand residents coming every Saturday or whenever Saturday we do this, it can get pretty congested. So another option was just to put it a little deeper so that people, there's just room for people to move.
But this would only be for city residents, right?
It would have to be, our recycling program has always just been for city residents.
Right, but if it's put there, like if I lived in Hyler and I showed up with a truckload of recyclable, am I going to have to show my ID or something to prove that I'm a city resident?
Yes.
Okay.
That's your manned person that you're talking about would do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and if a school wanted to, you know, pledge or solicit the council to receive the funds from that, certainly we could host it at this site, work with the school. They could work with volunteers to provide people on the Saturdays that we do this, kind of earn back that, those funds. I mean, I think that would be a great thing. But you guys understand, you probably hear it all the time. People keep asking, like, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? So we're trying to come up with a short-term solution, but we think that the curbside is going to be the long-term, even though it's likely to be expensive.
I don't think there's any way we can not do it and have it not fenced in. I think it'd be a wise expenditure of employee wages. Not that I necessarily want to do it on a Saturday, but I guess I maybe could want it now and then. But because MCC is still a disaster. I mean, I haven't been by their grub, but is that still as much of a mess as it was?
Is it a mess?
MCC still a mess?
I think that barn is full.
Yeah. Yeah, it has to be fenced in, it has to be manned by an adult, period.
I think that's just some of the lessons that we've learned is that. But I think city residents are going to treat this more responsibly, but I still think we need to control it.
Yeah.
And I think we need to, and when I say having like a person there, I think it's important to check addresses because the residents are paying for the service. But I also think being able to answer questions and help educate the public on what they can recycle and what they can't, I think that's very useful too.
Absolutely.
So if we took a trailer now and like three months later, we decided, we got the quote on curbside and we decided to switch to that, is there anything preventing us from that? Can we get rid of that trailer or are we agreeing to take it for a year?
There wasn't any time limitation on it, was there?
There wasn't, they did ask for that plan, so you know, there may be some more stipulations they put on it, but-
So I think that we could, we could-
Use this to bridge the gap.
Cancel that, yes, I think we could cancel that PCA thing when it was necessary. But even if we commit to curbside with any company, it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
There are some state grants that, last time we looked at this, I think it was in 17, was the last time we brought a quote for curbside to council. At that time, there was a grant that we could use to purchase the cans. So that offsets, otherwise there's capital cost upfront for Republic to buy, say, a can for every residence, three thousand cans. So, you know, we would want to look at what type of funding incentives are there, opportunities. They're going to have to have time to be able to purchase that and implement it. And so, you know, if you approve it one night, it's not like it's going to happen the next day. It's going to take quite a few months, I think, to implement curbside.
In those pictures that you drew there, so they would drive up, okay, could you just put one of them out there? So they would drive in, come to the spot, check their stuff, whatever, and then the person would help unload and then they'd drive around and out?
Yes.
So are they going out the same way they came in?
Yes.
Okay. So that might be a little bit of a backup.
That's why I came up plan number two. If that became very congested and, you know, we've got to feel this out.
Yeah.
Now, if we said, let's do this once a month, I'm going to say we're going to need to go to the back because we're going to have everybody showing up at once. If we did it twice a month, that's just less material and probably less people. And maybe it's a weekly thing, I don't-
Yeah.
And we, that's kind of, we need to determine the site. We need to determine whether we want to put dumpsters at that site or the PCA trailer. And then we need to determine what the frequency that we open it and, you know, I'm suggesting Saturdays. And then a time period, is it eight to twelve or ten to two or something like that?
So we, so we had that one temporary site for a little bit. I don't think it was cardboard, but it was other stuff to recycle, right? Wherever that was, didn't we just have one?
Cold storage?
No, we just, yeah, or whatever you could.
Oh, at the Emery?
Oh, no, no, didn't we just have a temporary place that you could go to? It was kind of out of town, it was a dump or something.
The landfill accepts cardboard.
So that's where we're telling people to go. But didn't you set up a temporary something somewhere?
Our co-mingled.
Yes.
Plastic.
That's it.
Metal.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's set up, that's set up at the cold storage, which is just off of Veterans Oak Grove, right around the corner from City Garage.
Okay.
Where the oil well site is.
Right, I just got a lot of feedback that that got really full really fast and there was nobody there and stuff.
We've been watching that container and it gets tipped twice a week. And the first two, the first week that they had it there, they didn't change the address in their computer system. So it went a full week without being tipped. And that's the fullest I saw it, but it still wasn't overflowing.
Okay.
So let's see, we've kind of got that pretty good right now. Yeah.
Okay.
And that one, I would think we would leave that open because that's every day. We don't have a lot of abuse there. There's only been a couple of boxes left there and there was a couple of bags of returnables. When I checked it the next morning, those were gone. So people have been pretty good about that so far.
Okay. So that one's okay to be that way, it's just the cardboard that we're talking about.
We're trying to solve the short-term cardboard solution.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
That's it. Citizens Comment, this is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
I'm Rick Schrock, I live in 603 Harvard Lane here in town. I'm a member of the Manistee Environmental Action Collaborative, which is a group in the local area but reaches beyond the city. And like many citizens, we recognize the importance of recycling and I'm glad you're talking about it. We appreciate the efforts that you've made so far to make it effective. Thank you. Josh Swenson and I spoke with Bill and with Jeff just last week about recycling. We had a great conversation. I think we're all very realistic about the challenges involved with recycling. We see contamination of material that's accepted. We see people dumping stuff that's not accepted. We see boxes that aren't flattened, which means it's, we don't get full containers. It's not easy. We know there's been lots of efforts over the past years trying to educate people and obviously they need more. Recycling costs a city money and that's one of the things that Jeff was just talking about. And I'm certainly concerned about our paying for services that other people use for free and we're picking up the bill. And so I hope that you address that and I think Jeff has a good suggestion there of just checking addresses for a while to see what happens. A few years ago, I used curbside recycling here in town. That was discontinued because we didn't have enough people and it wasn't cost-effective. During my time in town, there's been four different drop-off sites. So recycling is important, it's not easy, we understand that. Right now, you're in a transition period. Pretty soon, as Jeff told you, we're going to be forced to go to curbside recycling. That's a matter of state law. We can't do that instantly, you're in a transition and there's going to be drop-off for a while. But I'm encouraging you to be thinking about that transition and where we're going to end up and make that as efficient as possible. So I appreciate what the city's done so far. I understand there's challenges you have to address. I think curbside will help with some of that and it'll also create some new challenges. When we met with Bill and Jeff, we talked through a lot of these things. And one of the things we said is that citizens want this, citizens appreciate your effort. There are people that would be willing to help in some way. Now, and Jeff clearly reminded us, you can't run an operation just on volunteers. That's not reliable enough. But there may be a place for volunteers to fit in and supplement what staff is doing and we would be happy to be part of that. So thank you for what you're doing, we think it's important and would like to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, 276 First Avenue. You ladies did a lot of work, but it's got to be rewrote. Nobody come to the residents in the neighborhood and ask us that there's a business starting up. The history, they went through the history of Manistee, they got to go through permission on a building. ECO had to come in, they got to ask permission to get, for homeless people? And yet, a Realtor can come in, sell the house in our neighborhood. They push it as a daily rental even. Well, you could make your payments, take it into a daily rental, you're only going to use it this month and all that. And that turns around, nobody asked none of us in the neighborhood that they can open a business. You've got to sit down and have some meetings on this and get some stuff going. The police force doesn't have enough policemen to go through all the stuff that they said they need to police, the parking, the smoke of fires and all fireworks and all this stuff. I can call the police on the daily rental and I might get them there in an hour, two hours, three. If they're busy, they've got other things to do. Their job isn't for daily rentals. I'm sick of this daily rental crap and I think you better start looking at it better. Get some meetings, they can rewrite this stuff. And the fines, that's ridiculous. These fines, the first time should be a thousand dollars, the second time five thousand and the next time they're done altogether. And put it in hotline for the people to call for the legal daily rentals. Because you aren't going to find, there's still going to be people that are going to skirt this. They're going to, they're not going to follow the law. They are not doing it now. So why should they do it there? That's a piddly fine for what is going on. They're making big money on these things. And you don't see it. You don't see the problems we have in our neighborhood. Realtors are pimping out our neighborhoods to me. They're going around and, I had a neighbor get called up and told about a house that was coming up for sale. This is a good opportunity, you can make money. That's not right. If I want to build a garage and it's over the variance, I got to come to the zoning board and all this and that. Want a daily rental, buy one and I can have daily rental. If that's what it's going to be, then I'll start buying up houses and make daily rentals. I'm sick of this, this stuff. This has been going on, I got it, wrote down in my notes. I started this April 8th of 2021. I started with the council person I had then. And we were going to have meetings, ad hoc meetings, all this stuff. We hadn't had nothing. And now it's down to this and all of a sudden this, this thing is all thrown at us that they're going to, it's all said and done. No, it isn't said and done. Because I will sue the city and it's going to open up for more lawsuits for the city. And if you want to be tied up in court all the time, I welcome all the people to start suing the city then. Because you're violating our rights. And as far as you go, you're a Realtor. You've got a conflict of interest in this right now. You've got a conflict of interest in this right now. You shouldn't even be running none of this stuff or be involved in none of it. You know, it, it's, it's ridiculous, I, I, I don't understand, all the stuff that went on tonight, we spoke more about recycling and stuff than we did on questions or anything to answer for daily rentals. I mean, the stuff that come up, that's fine. I guess I'm done because I'm, my next step is with the law, I guess.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Mick Schumansky, 332 Fifth Street. Some of you that have been on council for a while know that this is not the first time that a plan has been presented for managing short-term rentals. At least five years ago was the first iteration. We have now become the last West Michigan coastal city that has not addressed this with an ordinance. All of our neighbors have done it. That's not all bad, because guess what? All the oh-hecks are already been captured. The Planning Commission and Housing North did a phenomenal job on the plan that you've just received. Sure, there might be a little bit of tweaking, but don't wait for perfect because it won't come. When we first started, there were only 50 some, when they did the snapshots, they said there's about 50 vacation rentals that we don't know about. Now, there's 150. The other thing, the elephant in the room is the longer we wait to manage this appropriately so it's balanced, so that vacation rentals can exist, but we have to protect the homeowners in the residential areas and we have to provide housing for our workforce. There is another part of that whole process that we have not addressed. Vacation rentals, for the times that they take away, takes a real estate property away from somebody to buy as their personal home and/or to be able to have long-term rentals. And again, ask any one of the large employers in the city, our growth, it's dependent on housing and this is a way of at least, at least managing the entire housing process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Harless. While my dad has left, um, I am the daughter of Roger Yoder, who you just recognized for his 40 years of service on the Planning Commission, and I just want to thank you for recognizing him for his years of service. While he will not get up here and say this, I just want to say to you that it certainly means a lot to him and, um, serving the city of Manistee has been his pleasure, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Council for the feedback tonight and I think we'll, I think looking at the questions, the FAQs, I think that's really how you know a program's going to work, so we're going to look at a couple of those comments, questions, like limiting the number of properties an individual owns at short-term rentals, um, will there be a reduction for current rental in the system? Couple of the other ones, you know, what, you know, if I rent my house for two weeks or a month, is that considered a short-term rental? I would, I think there's, there's some state definitions we'll lean on for that, but occupancy limits, just all those things. So, any questions you have, if you could send those to me, Tracy and Teresa, we'll make sure we get those and then continue this conversation. Thank you.
Okay. I can't even see any, nobody? Mr. Smith?
I am all set, thank you.
Ms. Lindberg?
I'm good, thank you. Brett? Um, I just had a couple of things. One second, I just have to find. I've had several citizens reach out about the tennis courts down by the beach. They said the weeds are just really tall and, um, several people said they've called and they've left messages and it's been like two weeks and they haven't heard anything, so I don't know if we can check those out for them. When I was going, um, down to First Street Beach earlier this week, um, the house on the corner of Tamarack and First Street, right across from the waterworks, has two signs now up that says, "This is not a racetrack, this is a neighborhood." So, I'm assuming there's some concern about traffic down there and I don't know if we can look into that, or maybe, I, I wasn't sure if there was an incident that we weren't aware of that's occurred, but they're like metal signs that are put up on posts, so it's not like they printed it out on the computer. Um, since we've been talking about recycling, um, I'm wondering if we can kind of go back and revisit Blight at some time now that we have a Blight officer, which I'm very appreciative of and I think is a step in the right direction, but I think there's an issue still with, like, the once a month putting it out, because, uh, like on my street, I've watched somebody's couch for a month because they missed it and they've left it out, so all of our, all of the neighbors have to watch that and on a holiday weekend, when you have family up and visitors, and, um, I received many, people contacted me, at least 10 about a house on Fourth Ave. I don't know if the people were moving out or people were moving in, because there was a for-sale sign, but the whole yard was full, like there was no green space. I actually took a picture, because I couldn't believe it, there were mattresses, there were chairs, dog crates, just bags of trash, and I went by today and it was all cleaned up, but there wasn't one thing in a trash receptacle or in a blue city bag, and that is one question that I get all the time from citizens, um, not understanding why they have to buy the city tote from Republic or why they have to pay the $3 a bag. So, I'm just wondering why some peoples get picked up if they just put random items out, but I mean, there was probably 1,000 items total, like it was unbelievable. So, I'm not sure if we can look at that process, because honestly, we should probably try to steer away from holiday time. I mean, we have visitors in town, we have family members, nobody wants to have a barbecue in their yard or sit out on their porch and have to look at their neighbor's trash. And then, Mr. Yoder left, but I did want to thank him for his years of service. Even before I got on council, there were several times I went to the Planning Commission. We're very lucky with many of our Planning Commission members, but I've always appreciated how willing, um, he is to listen to people's concerns. I do appreciate the sometimes humor that he brings to things, so I just wanted to thank him for his years of service and it hasn't gotten unnoticed, so, thank you.
Mr. Browski?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the city workers, they did a good job over the summer because of all the people we had in this town, it was, it was phenomenal and the merchants should have made, made out pretty good this year, so, that was good. On short-term rentals, this is just some of the stuff I've collected from Traverse City, Luddington, even Bear Lake is putting in for short-term rentals up there, uh, every town is getting into it and it needs to be worked out because, like you hear that, everybody's selling their house and then turning it into short-term rentals, so I think we need to jump on that thing and get more done on it. I've known Roger for a long time, uh, he's really dedicated, he's been thick too, so I give him a lot of credit for coming to these meetings, so I've known him all his life, uh, we lived alongside of each other when we were growing up, so I appreciate Roger's service. I want to thank you all for coming, thank you.
That's fine. I have nothing, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.